Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, if there's no changes or modifications to the agenda, we approve it for Thursday, October 1st.
Motion been made. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? There is no internal budget revisions, change in status. We do have a few. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable John Small for County Clerk for S. De Anne Leaden. I'm sorry, as Deputy Clerk with an annual salary of $30,218 effective October 5th, 2020. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Katie De La Gatti Prosecuting Attorney for Summer Nails as a legal assistant with an annual salary of $36,000.
Summer nails and summer not?
Effective October 2nd, 2020. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zia Director of Community Corrections for Dan Lea Simmons as a case manager with an annual salary of $40,000 effective October 15th, 2020. Change in status received from Mike Lang Chief Court Marshal for Marshal Carroll and Eric Squires. They are receiving a pay increase for years of service. Their salary will be increased from $30,844 to $32,152 effective October 1st, 2020. I'm sorry, $32,156. Letter of retirement received from Engineering for Dirk Stansbury effective December 31st, 2020. Sorry to see you retired. You still look pretty damn going young to me. Letter resignation received from Central Dispatch for Jordan Flowers effective September 30th, 2020. Letter of resignation received from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for Brandy North effective September 22nd, 2020. Letter of resignation received from the Sessions Office for Kayla Del Monte effective August 28th, 2020. Letter of resignation received from the Sheriff's Office for Courtney Rock effective October 10th, 2020. Letter of resignation received from the Council Office for Canet Petry effective October 30th, 2020. Letter of retirement received from County Clerk for Jeff Castle effective September 30th, 2020. Letter of resignation received from the IT Department for Joyce Lippens effective October 9th, 2020. Lot of changes in status. Any questions on those? Please. Yes. They could. They pretty much could coincide in the same equipment somewhat. Approval meds for September 17th, 2020 for County Council meeting. Everyone was present. Any changes, corrections? We have the county council calendars. Be here next Thursday and then on the 12th for Columbus Day will be closed.
Well, Thursday's got kind of wide, didn't they?
Boards and commissions. Nothing tonight. On Monday, 6:00 PM Planning Commission. Tuesday, 6:00, 1:30 PM Home Corps Orsham. 5:00 PM Server District, 6:00 PM Stormwater District. And next Thursday on the 8th, we'll have the Fire Board.
If I may, have the assessment scheduled to the afternoon of the 5th, beginning at 2:00, also between 22:00 and 1:00. One of the board assessments of those cases involves the state of us to be actuarial. State prefer not to be, but would like to do it by Zoom as well as the panel.
I prefer it face to face. I think it's more productive myself, but trying to get the state here to do their job is like pulling teeth. Well, it's their job. That's the problem. Our attorney can check it out. Well, no, I'm just saying, I mean, it's the state's duty to do that, right, Mr. Hess? Then they need to fulfill their duty.
Sorry, we're on the other side of the stage.
You know, there's another side to that argument.
That's all. I like my side.
At some point, you may want to be represented down there over a conversation and do a Zoom meeting, maybe.
They've been doing this for three years. For three years.
I'm just pointing out the other side of the argument. That's all. I didn't say I agree with it.
But in reality, though, when we show up and face to face, what are we going to say? We're more productive.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But that's why I'm, and that's a really good, that's a really good point to say that they're not going to be very productive if they do it from a Zoom meeting.
Well, the states here, to, they're, they're, our behalf.
Right. I get it. I agree. I'm just pointing out the other side. That's all.
I think we all understand that if we want to get something accomplished in Charleston, we better be prepared to make the trip.
Or hire somebody to do it.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So that's our preference, all right? We have, we have a bond reduction for Phil Coger Escavating Red Hill Section 1 Phase 1 File Number 033-05. And the Engineering Department has made that recommendation for a reduction. Any questions on that move? My Dirk's here. Pretty much build out. They're pretty much build out, man. Bond reduction for Phil Coger Escavating Red Hill Section 1 Phase 3 File Number 033-05. Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Any questions on that?
Could you, could you pull those two out and vote on those two separately so I can abstain from that vote?
Sure.
And the only reason is, and the reason I'm saying that is because I was the original developer in that subdivision and Phil was a partner way back when we did it before we started doing anything. And when we dissolved our, well, when I, when we dissolved our partnership, I bought the company out and he bought that property off the company. So I'd just like to abstain from those two.
Y'all want to zoom in on the next meeting? The next.
More productive in person.
The next one is a cancel check request by County Clerk's Finance Office. Any changes or corrections on those questions? All right, so I'm going to ask for Mr. Delly to leave. I'm sorry. We're going to, we're going to do the consent agenda without the bond reduction for Phil Coger Escavating. Look for a motion to approve that.
So move.
Second.
Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Now, we will do the individual motion on the bond reduction for Phil Coger Escavating Red Hill Section 1 Phases 1 and 3 File Number 033-05. They'll have a motion to approve those.
Second.
Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And I'll abstain.
Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Hess. Good morning, sir. We have personal property tax exoneration due to officer one and taxpayer one for officer and one real, or two real estate. Is that correct?
Good morning.
Good morning.
First one's the taxpayer error. In the former vehicle in Lakeview County. This taxpayer of 153 calories.
Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Let the record show that it failed.
We have one personal property office error. We had incorrect bills. He was keying on District 269.
Motion on one, personal property tax exoneration due to officer error.
So move.
Have a motion. Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Okay. Last thing I have is for real estate, we have an officer error of two. And one was transferred in the wrong name and you have to correct that. The other was above the assessment. Total of those two was $2,438.76.
Entertaining motion on two real estate tax exemptions due to officer error.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Boarding meeting reports. Mr. Barnhart?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I have two meetings. The water health, the water district, and they're both held at exactly the same time, at 4:00 on Monday, so therefore only one. And I decided to attend the health department Zoom meeting, because you know how I love Zoom meetings. And did not get to attend the water district meeting, but the health department, of course, they're continuing to deal with COVID-19. We're down two nurses and two sanitarians.
Two?
Two.
Good luck on the sanitary.
They're, they actually have the sanitarians, but they're trained. So Glenn is working both Berkeley and Morgan County. And I used to do that, and it is, it wears on me.
I can tell.
Yeah, look at me now.
Yeah.
He's actually about 30 years old, Dad.
A shell on my forehead. Of course, I had, it was a little bigger back when I did it than when Glenn's doing it.
With the COVID-19, any progress, because we haven't had dealing with COVID, but any progress on when things might get back to normal? Are there some states are starting looking things back up?
Well, they're figuring spring. Well, that's when the companies are anticipating to get the vaccine out to the public of the United States, spring. And until you get the vaccine and, hey, you're stuck.
Well, they also know, they'll also know how it affects and one of, one of the big concerns all along has been a relapse of everything when the cold weather hit again. So that will also get us through the cold weather of this season and be able to.
Winter season's starting to wind, wind up and, you know, they've got that to do with it. They've had school administrations to deal with, all the regular stuff, you know. So, you know, staff is stretched thin and, you know, that's the situation. We're being opposed to staff. So, and Ray Joel, I think, found a source for maybe some money for the health department expansion. So, you know, that was good news. And so they're hanging in there.
It's good.
President, it's been a while since you had Mr. Turner's in. Would you like to escape?
Yeah, because I mean, yeah, I think it was, was it the state of Florida that opened everything back up?
Of course, you got trees in the hay, but in 45, it's not here for that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just kind of. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just kind of interested. I mean, I see people still counting, a lot more people going into the buildings and stuff like that. I think, I think we should be into another phase by now. Well, we'll talk to them too.
Yeah, Florida opened back up, but also saw the disney laid off. Twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, something like that.
Absolutely.
Sure. That'd be expected.
And airlines, they're going on a cargo, passengers way down.
Miss Ball, you got six minutes.
Okay, I'll keep with it. This week, there's been things happening at the roundhouse. I finally got the phone line in for the fire suppression system to get that, that approved in the bathrooms. We had a very large wedding over the weekend.
Did you say in the bathrooms? Does that mean everything's good to go then?
Uh huh.
Wow.
We're going to have an official opening once we get the health department approval, yes.
Everybody get to use the bathroom?
Yeah, but we had a very large wedding this weekend, and it was absolutely beautiful, and the pictures are on the website, so if you get a chance. The other thing is, I was working on the food exchange project. I had done research last week early, met with Andy Blake and Mayor Harriet Johnson, because they're working with CSX on the Carlisle Trail, and submitted the fact that the, there was supposed to be a lease agreement with the Roundhouse to use the food exchange, which we did not, we did not have. And so all of that was submitted on Friday. Monday at ten o'clock, I got a message from CSX that it said the food exchange is on their demolish list. So I'm very grateful.
That's a shame. That, that building, I stopped looking at it two weeks ago myself, and there again. It was, that's a beautiful building. It had the heavy timber trusses, just like the, the Ford wood shop.
It was built in nineteen twenty-two.
It would have been nice to be, but, I mean, it could still be saved, but.
But we have no funding for that. That's very difficult to access. But the access issue is the big issue. So anyway, going further, we have another graduate student who works with the National Park Service who's trying to get his master's degree. And so the scope of work for Josh Bowers and Brad Tree and Royal is due in December, and this gentleman is looking to get approved to do a marketing campaign for that package. The Brad Tree and Royal work, so that that's going to be his work. So I mean, we're going on Saturday to set that up. So things are moving right along. Thank you.
All right.
She's still got a couple more minutes.
She does. Now, for you to do yours.
Well, I was going to ask you a question.
Oh, all right, go ahead.
So, so the parks interact, don't they have some type of grant that was awarded from the city or something to do stream work on the roundhouse property there?
This is going for economic development in the city, and they're doing the walking trail on the backside, east side of the Tuscora Creek, which we own. And that is what the DOH is part of the TAP grant. They haven't got the grant yet, but that's where it is.
I'm sure they haven't got the grant, because I thought that grant expired here before too long.
No, the, all the apps, the absolute applications and stuff will not do till, like September eighth or something, I don't know. There's four phases of the TAP grant, but they, they knew the grant was coming out. They normally came out in July, but it didn't come out till September. So no, that's, that's one of the fourth phases. The pedestrian trails is one of the phases of the TAP grant that can be used. One is just design, the second is design and construction, the third is rightways, and the fourth is pedestrian trails.
I did have a couple of executive meetings this week that I didn't have regular meetings, but I did attend, I did attend, I think it was Monday, on the Department of Agriculture. Gave a grant, I think it was forty-six thousand dollars, to modern renovations for the foundry, for some work to be done on the foundry down there. Yeah, that was, yeah, that was a nice, nice start, nice plan that those guys have with what they're doing down there. It was nice to see that.
John, why isn't he here?
John was actually, I think he was the applicant for the grant. His consulting company that he, I don't know, I think he just works for the company that does the consulting that he was doing, and he may be the consulting. I don't know how that actually worked out, but John was, he was down there. Mac Warner showed up. It was Mac's brother, actually, that, what's his name? I forget what that name is.
Chris Money.
Chris. Chris Warner. Yeah. He's, he's a young one. He's,
I think, isn't that?
He said, he said he gets, he said he gets to the food table before Mac does.
The, what I'm, what, the way I read it, and that's going to be stabilization of the canal, like through there with the creek and all that.
Right, yeah, it's, it's for work on, on that whole area. They're doing some, they're doing some hydra, hydraulic evaluations, that type of thing. What they'd like to do is build a wall along the edge to keep the creek in the boundaries, but that's a, that's a real, real hard thing to do, to restrict an area that allows for water to expand.
Such a scenic spot.
Huh?
Such a scenic spot.
Oh, it'd be gorgeous.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's, it's going to, there's a. Yeah, I just bought the property behind that, and we're getting ready to try to do from a thousand foot of, hopefully a thousand foot of string restoration and all that. So we got, I've got meetings next week with EPA and,
Water Corps of Engineers.
And, and the city flood guy and, who else? Department of Agriculture. All of them out there.
There was a, on the Corps of Engineers office up in Winchester. Costco? I don't know if they would be in this region or not, unless you have to go to Pittsburgh or something.
I'm not the one setting up the whole meeting, but I know we got one next week to, to look at all that, and, and they, everybody seems to be excited about cleaning it up. So, no, it's, it would be nice to make that whole area lively again.
Danny, one of the questions you brought up last week was about the way station that was there. At one time, there was two tracks that went back through there. So, and there was also a sawmill just east, west of that, that way station. So there could have been a combination of a lot of things, and, because the people I were asking, I was digging, but I couldn't get, no one knew exactly, but they said it probably left open railroad because the tracks went through there. That was where the Vicentaine train was stored, was parked.
I was actually, yeah, I was actually told that there was, there was, by somebody that when they were a kid, they used to unload beer into the old building.
All right, we're, ten o'clock has became, or has come, and we have a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant. They wanted to give us a motion to go into a public hearing. That been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in a public hearing. Who wants to? Looks like Rachel's, and Alan Booth is coming forward. So come on.
First, two required public hearings for the development block grant, specific block grant, as it relates to COVID. There's a bunch of different activities that are eligible in today's construction and renovation, facilities, expanding public service, and more dispayments, fighting plastic, that sort of thing. So, as the board has pointed out, we have a project, this first public hearing, if anyone can, if they're going.
All right, anybody here to speak out on for the public hearing?
There's no one to speak. We're going to close the public hearing.
Motion been made. Second by Miss Ball. Any discussion? Alan, did you have anything to add? I'm sorry. Miss Ball? All right, there's a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. So I guess I'd have to ask, one of the, one of those things that they report something, that were expanded because we needed extra space, but also during the COVID stuff, we couldn't meet because it couldn't spread out.
This, this, if you're fortunate, actually deals with,
Design?
Actually design and works on construction, but it hasn't been correctly related to expansion of services that will be prepared.
Okay.
And if you know, one of the projects that we had in mind is, is to turn this event here, we just talked about, goes to, to actually load the staff there as, as more.
Okay.
And we thought that, that additional demand on the health department as well as the future needs of health department to the next six to twelve. We have a project, Rachel, that's a preliminary, preliminary, they will project.
Okay, all right, thank you. Bill and Rachel. Back to the board and meeting reports, Dan.
Yeah, and I did have another meeting, not a board meeting, but a meeting downtown at the square with Dr. Reedy and, and, Bill Kearns, along with Main Street Martinburg, to try to work out plans to bring, bring festivities for the holidays downtown and how that could shape up. And it, it looks like, it looks like there's going to be a plan put together to be able to do that, so. That's a, that's, and the mayor was there, and Andy was there, and Shane was there. It was a good, good sized group came down just to discuss concerns on how to make it work out.
Good. Mr. Wadger?
I had no meetings, but there was a couple of functions I was called to.
The meeting I have that I can report on is the, Amblance Storey had their meeting last Thursday. They were coming to the MOU, which, one of the things the Amblance Storey is looking at doing, which, again, who do you talk to first, is adding another E and T at Back Creek Valley, so they're saying that, that they would pay dividends to do that, and they're also looking at changing the, the operation for the Amblance from nine AM to nine PM instead of six AM to six PM. Which is, they're, they're in conversation with the fire department, which also said they need to talk to Chief Gokener about if it happens before his retirement, but it's, it's a little different. The good thing is that would allow the Amblance to go out, fully staff, and the fire truck to get to the same scene. Right now, whichever one gets called out first is the one that goes. And so they're looking at changing things up and, and seeing, seeing how that would be effective and see if it works for everyone involved, the majority of everybody. Also, there's a discussion right now about remodeling and expansion on, on Station Ninety-eight up in Dartsville, in Wood. In the, in the past, as the city of Martinburg, our Amblances are getting bigger because of the coverage and stuff that you got to go by. And which we, we knew, well, the Amblance Storey knew when they built a new building and, and, and the, what's it called?
In commercial sense.
Yes, that, it would trigger some type of renovations and expansion for the Station Ninety-eight, so that's, that's going. Carla has retired, so we had to replace our secretary, she was acting secretary and treasurer for the board, so Julie is now the secretary and treasurer. We had a second session for personnel minors, and other than that, that was pretty much it. And update on the CARES Act that they, they're seeing their reimbursement supplies, that's helping them out a lot because they're, they haven't spent so much money in overtime because of, you know, their personnel being quarantined. Could have been a whole crew, so that's coming in pretty nicely, helping keep their books in the bag. Other than that, that's all I have to report on, boards of commissions. Any appointments on any, or appointments or reappointments on the, any boards?
The other thing, Mr. President, I would like to accept those various regulations, etc., in order to thank you.
Okay, all right.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint David Irving for the ambulance authority.
All right, motion that is made. Second, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We have.
Are we going to, do you have an interview set up with the new applicant, David Kemp?
I don't think we do yet. It was at the airport and CDB, so I was waiting for one. Do you want?
Yeah.
Can you have him scheduled up, Penny? Anything else? All right. Next on our agenda is Connect Petri for District Supervisor, state accounts for the month of October. It says thirty, but I think there's twenty-eight. Is that correct?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Everyone, good morning. We do have thirty to schedule the estates for approval today, beginning with industry Baron, Bonnie Lee Valerly, Lloyd Ronald Burdick, Benjamin Franklin Byers, Nellie Fay Castleman, Tony Monia Clinton, Jerran A. Cooper, William Lee Crawford, Jack D. Davis, Mark T. Dewing, also in his heart, Thorpe Dewing, Helen Lee Guest, Sherri Jane Hayes, Ruth Virginia Erden, also in his group, Kane Erden, Phyllis Louise Pass, also in his group, Phyllis Amy Wakeley Pass, Doris Virginia Holliday, also in his group, Doris B. Holliday, Catherine Elizabeth Houston, Robert Joseph Johnson, Carlos Victor K. Seener, Charles Douglas Kisecker, Clyde Leon Linton, Daniel Ray Hall, Gerald W. Hope, Donald E. Pittsnagle, James Randolph Price, Claude E. Roberts, Daniel St. Bird, Frances A. Starwell, Anita Claire Spencer, also in that group, Steve Spencer, Kevin Ray Webber, and Philip G. S.
All right, anybody have any questions for Connect? I need a motion on the estates. Motion been made. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. And Miss Petri, it looks like we owe how many hearings to schedule?
No, I've had some discussion from some people about petitioning for a few hearings, but I haven't received any petitions on those.
Okay, all right, sounds great. Thank you. Mr. Davis, let's go ahead and do your state budget revision.
I have two state budget revisions in your pocket for consideration. The state is, the first is state budget revision number two, the coal severance. We've received some reimbursements that I would like to put back into the coal severance fund in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then recognize that as refunds and reimbursement from external sources, and then place that back in other buildings. We have made some commitments for some of our building maintenance projects that that might be used for.
Got to get back to where I was. I'm taking a motion for.
Do you have a motion for, um, state budget revision, uh, revision number four, Fund Zero Zero One?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
The next state budget revision, um, for your consideration is state budget revision number five, four. Fund Zero Zero One for your, uh, general fund.
Wait a second, which one did I just ask for, motion?
Um, Cold Severance.
I just asked for.
He just asked for.
Number four, Fund Zero Zero One, did I ask a motion for the wrong one?
You did.
Okay.
That's Cold Severance Fund Two, number one.
Alright, we need to rescind our motion that we just did. Um, and I asked for a new motion to approve the, um, the budget revision. And I was incorrect, it would be, uh, Fund, uh, resent of, of O two, Fund Zero Zero Two.
I will send, I will send my motion.
Alright, need a second, rescinded motion, please. Motion has been rescinded, um, can we make a new motion on, um, approval of, uh, state budget revision number two, Fund Zero Zero Two?
Second.
Motion been made, second, all in, all in favor say aye. Alright, sorry, Mr. Davis.
No, I'm sorry, uh, one, all three. Um, now for state budget revision number four, to Fund Zero Zero One, General Fund. This is the monthly state budget revision that we do to the general fund. Since the last state budget revision presented to the council, we've received thirty-seven checks and ACHs. Um, they totaled one million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Of note, uh, is one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars in reimbursements from the CARES Act. Um, to date, we've applied for four million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and have been awarded to date, three million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, also in this state budget revision is reimbursements totaling one hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, which is the general fund monies that we had, um, uh, expended, uh, early on in the project of five twenty South Raleigh Street. If you remember, we passed the, the resolution to reimburse the general fund for that money from the bond proceeds, which we've done. Um, recommending that, um, there's als- there was also a hundred, or also a hundred fifty-five thousand dollar. I take that back, there was also an increase, or a check of a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars from the state of West Virginia for some voters' registration, um, reimbursement due to vote. Um, so the state of West Virginia has been very cooperative and very supportive of us. Um, as we, um, incur additional expenses due to, to the coronavirus. Actually very quick in giving us the reimbursements. Recommending that the hundred and two thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars received from the state as reimbursement to voters' registration be, uh, put in supplies and materials of voters' registration. Uh, also, uh, we had nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars, uh, reimbursement from various outside agencies for IT services. Recommending that that money be put back into supplies and materials. Um, last week, the council authorized the purchase of the mobile portable radios and chargers from Molgola, uh, for the Sheriff's Department. We have already taken possession of that equipment. Uh, it was approved last Thursday, we started taking deliveries, um, Friday.
I can't believe that, that's almost phenomenal.
Several, several pilots being delivered today. Um, so, um, recommending that six hundred and twenty-eight thousand be placed in the information technology capital outlay equipment. Uh, also, um, Mr. Wine, uh, and, and I, and Tracy and Kenny, as well as Myra, uh, your, the finance director, um, we'll be making a recommendation to you later today on the financial software upgrade that we have been working on for a number of years. We actually set aside, I don't know, probably six or seven years ago. Um, we are ready to, Mr. Wine, on behalf of the group, is ready to make a recommendation, uh, to the council. If that recommendation is accepted, um, the software cost would be three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm recommending that, um, that be placed under the software line item in IT. Um, we received two thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars from Hyda for task force overtime reimbursement, recommending that, that, that be placed in the law enforcement overtime budget. And then the balance of six hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars be placed in your contingency account, which will be, which will bring up the revised, um, uh, starting balance of that account of slightly more than three point three million dollars. Um, so it will be a pretty good, pretty good situation.
Well, that team budget just keeps growing and growing, don't it?
Yes.
Yeah, nah, good thing being done there, so. As we, as we stated, the radios are pretty much outdated and non-serv- serviceable. The software, from what I understand, Mr. Wine, that, that software, if we, if is approved today is, the leaps and bounds ahead where we are today. Um, so, I plead a motion to approve state budget revision number four, Fund Zero Zero One.
So moved.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion?
I think you made a very good point there, though, about the budget continuing to grow. Because that budget is always going to continue to grow because IT is a very, very expensive, um, equipment. And as technology evolves, it continues to cost much more.
Plus the, the department itself is, you know, uh, hire more people to do more and more work because everything we do now revolves around IT. Was about twelve years ago, Mr. Wine, when you came over. Two thousand and seven, sounds close, um, and.
Said you have hair back then.
Yeah, but it was just, it was just you probably back then, wasn't it? Was it you and by yourself? Yeah, and, uh, now you're twelve people, yep. So, um, just doing a huge amount of work and not only for the county, but for, for other entities that, that county supports and.
Well, this council is very, um, it's been very thoughtful. How we leverage our IT services, um. We do, the, the IT department has an incredible amount of work for a lot of the outside agencies now. Um, we just took over, Morgan and, uh, Perk County Health Department. And it's done, it's been doing, uh, a considerable amount of work.
And the development authority.
We get reimbursement.
Transit authority, right, transit authority, I mean, they do a lot of work for all the boards.
Considerable amount of money by doing it in-house. Um, I remember when I came here, we didn't have an IT department and everything was, um, contracted out, um, with software systems. So that if we had an IT issue, we'd call it software systems. They sent someone down here, the faculty drive, to take care of the IT issue right back. And our billing actually started before the door. So from the time they left up there to the time they got here in the back, we were billed for it. So, um, the appearance would be that, that we're spending a lot of money on IT, which we are. But I, I think that we're being smarter. Um, certainly, um, this in, in areas here, I guess, since we're running ahead of states, we've talked about the software. Um, this software will be, it's, it's long overdue. Uh, and will give us tools that we have never, we've never had available to us, so.
It allows us to do our job better.
Absolutely, you can send in the company to your home, um, we can set up executive dashboards for you. We can tailor dashboard each individual, so that if there's certain specific things that you want, you, when you bring up, when you log in, your, your executive dashboard will come up and you'll have the actual, um, real-time financial data that you need. When I bring mine up in the morning, I can have my program so that the actual bank balances is to be tied to the bank. Actual fund balances in, in all of our accounts will be here. The executive dashboard that I tailor for my specific needs will be here. And then over here will be the, um, the actual time control reports that shows me the expenditures by line item by department. We're, we're pretty excited about some of the possibilities.
Well, and it's out of the box thinking, I mean, if you, you, you know, if you look at what the IT department's been doing for, uh, all the boards. I mean, all the boards that I sit with, not all, but most of the boards I sit on, um, you know, they're, they're, they've been able to help with phone services and, and, uh, internet services and those types of things that are saving those boards an enormous amount of money. Um, e- even though the department grows a little bit, the council is doing those things to support all these boards in the community, um, that are all part of the county government, so. Very beneficial.
And Gary Mix's presentation, I know you have a vote on the budget. Gary Mix's presentation, and I know he hasn't put any credit, but, um, I, I'm concerned about this next project, the software project. Um, the software that we just implemented, um, mid-year this year in planning and engineering was a pretty substantial effort. Unfortunately, Brian and Heather and Steph, because of the technical nature of the, of the software as it deals with engineering and planning and planning reviews and things like that. They raised, they need on this. This software, Gary can talk a little bit more about it, um, I'm concerned. You know, we're only going to get one opportunity to do this right. Um, this is an extremely complex piece of software that will be tailored for our needs. I need Gary, and I talk to Gary about it, I don't, I don't need one of his staff, or I, I prefer. And I don't want to tell him how, how people's workload, I prefer that his staff, although maybe there's a support, I really need Gary there at the end of the call, um, the implementation of this software. And I'm not sure where he can, he can answer that, I'm not sure he has the capability to do what I want him to do. Um, not the capability, the time to do what I want him to do. Um, so as he goes through this, maybe keep in the back of your mind, maybe we could add a, add an IT analyst that he could upload some of his work. Um, so that we can, um, we can focus more on this. Um, also, um, we have not discussed formally with the council. Um, we have been taking more and more of the GIS work in-house for, that was house numbering from, um, Central Dispatch, um, for years, that's where it's been housed. Um, by the end of the year, I would like to think about bringing all of the GIS responsibilities for house numbering in our IT department, if that's where it really should be housed. Of course, they would work with, um, with Central Dispatch, um, coordination of those efforts, but the line share, the heavy lifting would be done down in IT, which is another reason that we might want to think about adding another analyst down there to help us with that, so.
So would that be treated as a subcontract for Central Dispatch?
Yes, so, that's all.
Well, uh, Mr. Wine is here, we'll just go ahead and bring him up.
You wanna?
Make him up.
Alright. Need, uh, need a vote on the state budget revision number, uh, number four, Fund Zero Zero One, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Wine, county, deputy county administrator, fed recommendation for financial software.
Morning. I think it's important to note the conversation we just had. Understand, past the in-kind of five hours to these outside agencies, your agencies paid for that service. So, what council person did you mention, um, I would hope that they're all satisfied with what they get there. But you give them five hours and they, they paid for the service they asked for. They're supporting us.
And that's worked out very well.
Yeah.
That was, that was something we put in place probably three years ago. Two and a half years ago or something.
And, and I would say less than half of what they'd have to pay for somewhere else.
So, to the conversation about the financial software in the county clerk's finance office. I think first and foremost, um, Mr. Small is in agreeance with what I'm about to talk about, since it directly impacts the finance department, which he manages or controls. Um, know that the software that, that is used here was installed in the mid-nineties. Uh, it was developed in the late eighties, um, and it has been kept to date over the years with regard to the process and the procedures of what state code is and what gas we does and so on and so forth, so.
So the technology of it's thirty-seven years old.
The in, the, the software itself is, yes, it is in fact that. Um, it doesn't offer the glitz and glamour that you expect when you click on your iPad and you open it. You don't get that from our finance software. Our finance software, many people look at it and go, oh, that's DOS. If you work any of you or those I am in technology, DOS means, no damage.
Yep.
It's pretty much texting color. Uh, it's really cool when it offers color, it used to be just plastic.
Right.
Right, so it is called, actually, green screen emulation is what it looks like. It's fifty to fifty emulated back to an IBM, what is now called an I series. Uh, it's a mid-range computer that sets and you interface with it with a piece of software. Basically, you want to look up, you want to pay a voucher. They go to a menu, they take number one and they hit enter and they read the menu and this is okay, pay voucher. They take number two and they hit enter and go through all these processes. So the, the mouse and all of that stuff. So reporting and direction and stuff like that is not as simple as what it would be from a piece of software designed in twenty-twenty. Um, so step one of this directly impacts the finance office. We're talking about the accounts payable on Berkeley County, uh, they spend a better part of three million dollars. Uh, and that's all done through that system and it. It does that job, and it does that job very well, but that's all it does. Um, what we're proposing or talking about here are facets of computing that Berkeley County does not do. Uh, we do not do electronic employee onboard. So when you come in here, you sit down, ping, any, any stack of paper, you take it out and you read it, you bring it back to sign forms and do all this. In today's world, that is not how you onboard employee. You sit them down in front of your iPad and they sign electronically, they submit electronically, you read the documents electronically, and the end documents are submitted back to them electronically. If you closed a mortgage on a house in the last five years, you didn't get any papers. It all came electronically, you signed it electronically. When you onboard an employee now, and he has a bunch of paper, she gets a piece of papers, she gives it to Alan, Alan gives some to you, it all gets signed and at the end of this meeting gets handed delivered to finance. And then they take that paper and they key it into the computers. That's eliminated. So when you onboard an employee through human resources, it gets embedded in payroll automatically. So when the council sets a salary of forty thousand dollars for employee one, two, three, they onboard them, they submit it to payroll and they go on the books at what you approved, what was entered by HR, day one. That is unheard of in this organization. It, it is, it's, it's, it's so many different silos of information here with regards to my finances that it makes it very difficult. When you turn to the senior leader and you say, hey, Alan, what's this mean? I can tell you the first place he's going to go, it's his left screen and it's full of spreadsheets. And God forbid that screen gets turned off because he called you a fag. That's his heartbeat for what's happening here, he tracks it manually, he has that skill set. But when you ask him a question, he has to go and reference that. And he has to, one, having defined the formulas that answer those questions manually and improve them. With this kind of environment, he just goes to the dashboard and he said, well, the president wants to look at finances, uh, charted with a bar graph, um, two thousand fourteen to today, he goes, and he answers. So wait until you was to see budget season twenty-twenty-two. Uh, not twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, it will be a different animal. Uh, so that's one piece, so human resources, uh, payroll tied to payable. So human resources, uh, payroll tied to payables, all automated, all inclusive, all wrapped under the hood of a piece of software. It's all about buying things. Right now, right now Tracy has spreadsheets just like Alan. She buys stuff where she buys it, what was the best price and all that stuff. Never ever tied to payables. Tracy has a silo of data, she probably has a folder full of spreadsheets, she probably has a file cabinet with pictures of the quotes and all that stuff. Hundred percent limited, it all happens within here. Department head wants to buy something, the requisition starts there, the quotes get attached, the pictures of the quotes get attached, gets submitted for approval. Once approved, her general purchase order is submitted right to payers today. So when you say, hey, this purchase order, Alan says, well, that's for thirty-seven widgets. When you see the numbers, you can literally click and see the free quotes, see what they were, where they came from and where they were paid for.
And if they felt get the quotes, then be sent back to a user department that said they had been followed purchasing requirements, either have to get quotes and send it up or you have to go through a process.
So there's so many pieces and moving parts that happen in this organization manually that need automated. And as you all know, going automated doesn't necessarily mean easier, sometimes it means more. Uh, but in this instance, the most important piece to keep your eye on is that it all gets tied together from start to finish. Right now, let's just talk about, we're working on a project for the DRC, we're going to buy twenty-five iPads. You count on me to keep the record where we go with twenty-five iPads, given they receive fifteen thousand dollars. I submit, you approve it, it gets bought and the bill is paid. When you go to finance and say, can I see the quotes? Finance doesn't have the quotes. They go back to purchasing, depending on whether Tracy bought it or we bought it, Tracy may have them and come back to us. This puts it all under the hood and we talk about being open, we talk about having everything at your fingertips and the public wanting to know. It streamlines all of that and it just, just takes us to another level of transparency that we continue to strive to do. Um, the, the other piece that, there's two other really important pieces here that we do not today account for. It don't count for grants from an accounting standpoint, we don't account for capital projects from a county standpoint. So now when you have a capital project like the DRC is happening, that has some grant funding attached, when you go up to the accounting office, if you look at the four million dollars worth of expenditures, you can see the purchases, you can see the expenditures, you can see grants flowing in and out, you can see all the approval processes and then finally a bottom line, what that capital project cost. Now, stand now, spreadsheet on Alan's left line. So this just brings us to, you know, October of twenty twenty and lets all of these users I just mentioned from purchasing, human resources, to chief executives, to finance, to payroll, and puts it all wrapped underneath a piece of software that's designed to do all of that for us. Um, we aren't, it's all packed, uh, we're just behind the eight ball and never really, uh, taken that initiative. We've, we've done a lot with technology in many, many offices. Unfortunately, in, in these four, if you will, you know, payroll, payables, human resources, and then the regular county piece for grants and other stuff, we have never done, always done it manually. So, uh, if the council would see fit, uh, the, the bottom line prices, as Alan mentioned, uh, it actually comes in at three twenty-one, four seventy-four. Um, there are two numbers that I didn't speak to in my memo by, uh, non-intentionally. One is the annual maintenance that's, that's involved. It's way the first year, we won't see that, but the following year, it's, it's going to land probably around thirty-five thousand a year. We're paying twenty-one now, so it's a net of about fourteen more than we used to pay, um, that we can probably absorb. I probably won't need that extra because we're paying those now. Uh, lastly, another number that in that three twenty-one, four seventy-four that didn't include was, quite honestly, I don't know that there'll be any. They budget about nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars for travel. This could go off without ever seeing any, I don't know. So I didn't include it in the budget, will have to do it, but by no means will have been seen. Uh, I would say with the travel, this particular company comes to stickers out of rain. Um, the demonstrations that we did were all remote because they're on fifteen and going to be quarantined, we go back so they didn't see anybody, obviously. Uh, so three twenty-one, four seventy-four is a bond, is the number that we're asking to be approved today, uh, knowing that, uh, a little bit of increase in maintenance in twenty twenty-two and then there will be travel, it's just uncredible.
But, uh, is there, evidently there's going to be some staff training and et cetera because this seems to be a major upgrade that you're going to change.
Unbelievable amounts of training. Uh, it is all wrapped in the project, so the, I'll speak to a project that's going on right now. I have two staff members that are doing an upgrade project with a piece of software like this that's in Longport. This year, we have nineteen hundred and seventy-four hours in that project, those two people.
Wow.
So, and that's not the only software project that's going on. So this is a major lift. Uh, I would venture to say, Heather and Alan mentioned Lama deployment. We didn't have to manage that because those two teams are so technical and the leaders of those two teams, and I'm going to include Melanie as a leader because Melanie and Brian work as a really good team and Heather on the planning side, they lifted Lama, they birthed it, they delivered it, they raised it and they're delivering it today. My team did not. This is different. This is much like the Longport one I just spoke of, uh, again nineteen hundred hours and this is October. So in ten months, we got nineteen hundred hours of one project. So they're big.
Gary, so you have the table built and break down basically, I have to say.
We'll make it work. We won't fail, I promise, but it will be very tight. Uh, taking on health department was a lift for us, uh, we talked in two locations, so we mentioned before, and I stood here at the last pledge of presentation and talked about growth from my team. This project alone absolutely could necessitate growth from it, it would be unbelievably thank you and I would appreciate it immensely, but, um, we're, I'm never going to say you can't do it. My team will tell you, I'm overselling all the time, but.
So basically, your, 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 your challenge, like you always tell us, it's the one way you know that it's going to get done, but at the same time, you're in agreement with Mr. Davis.
Always.
Okay.
Uh, yes, so if, if the council so chose, uh, I, I absolutely positively contestify the growth of members with this position.
Plus you just have a note coming.
Yeah, and, you know, I had an enlist, she's only been here about six weeks, she's wonderful, but when federal government offers her an extra thirty thousand, she's, she can be expected by twenty minutes. I bless her, I enjoy her, right? So, um, council personnel, you said it earlier, the technology is, it's costly, right? Even though there's a, there's a, there's an investment to buy this stuff, it just doesn't sit there and go, you've lifted Lama and we did it, approaching a house, still maintenance and stuff that we assume, um, this is, this is huge for us. This is huge. To be successful and to give how many, I know he wants, it will be that nineteen hundred hours in ten months. Uh, so it's huge by itself.
So it must be just purchased.
Twenty-nine reprogrammers.
Twenty-nine reprogrammers.
Well, pick up your conversation in near, near future. I'd like to say, yeah, six hundred and some radios.
Twenty-nine reprogrammers, they're about to be a different beginning, that's just the days of our time, so.
It's not six hundred and some.
How many radios? Um, one hundred and eighty, one hundred and sixty-four?
Yeah, aren't you four radios, twenty-nine craters and they'd be out there and ready to go. Software for, plus what you mentioned. All right, um, entertain a motion to award our software, uh, finance software to Tyler Technologies, uh, for three hundred and twenty-one thousand four seventy-four.
So.
Motion they made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, thank you. Um, take a very, very quick restroom break, we've got a lot of people in the audience right now, so we'll go and come right back.
We're back in session. Next on our agenda is Teresa McKay, Vice President of Marketing and Development from WBU Hospital. From Medicine it says here, so Hospital I'd say. Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Seems like it just flies by every year.
And I brought Kayla, a breast cancer advocate from the WBU Cancer Institute.
Good to meet you.
It's our pleasure to be here again and to talk with the Council on the Month. The fact that today's October 1st is perfect timing for this.
It is, it is. First of month, the whole month. But you want to read the proclamation?
My pleasure. As I certainly do. On this proclamation, West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day and Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2020. Whereas in 2020, an estimated 47% of West Virginia women will be diagnosed with breast cancer and approximately 295 women disease. And whereas breast cancer continues to be the cause of cancer-related deaths among West Virginia women. A woman has 1 in 8 or 12% chance of developing breast cancer in her lifetime and a 1 in 38 or 12 or 6% chance of dying from the disease. And whereas currently the best method to reduce deaths due to breast cancer is through early detection of the disease. And women aged 50 or older should have a mammogram at least every year. And whereas women ages 40 to 49, she talked with their healthcare provider about what she needs to schedule. And whereas clinical breast exams by physician, a nurse recommended every three years for women in their twenties or thirties and every year within a four-year window. And whereas breast self-exams is an option for women starting in their twenties. Women should be told about the benefits and limitations of the breast self-exam. Clinical breast exams, breast self-exams and mammograms can save lives. Women should talk to their healthcare provider about their individual screening schedule. Whereas the Berkeley County Council recognized that early detection and the importance of life-saving practices that they do can save lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Council will provide for my October 1st today. As West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day in the month of October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Berkeley County Council urges all Berkeley County women to become aware that they are at risk for developing breast cancer and to discuss screening with their healthcare provider.
Thank you Teresa. Anybody have any questions for Teresa?
What percentage of women actually get?
Yeah.
Well, mammograms.
Oh, does it being screened?
I don't have an exact number. I will say by doing something like this, we try to get the word out in this area. It's like pushing up like on the lower end of when these patients screen and then kind of measure if they have to do with cost and stuff. So I don't have an exact number of how many we see, but at WBU we do, in the month of October, offer promotions or screening mammograms to help with that.
Is that with bodies posted?
That's different.
It's a little different.
But as Kayla was saying, during the month of October, the first four Saturdays, starting this Saturday, we're offering our $60 screening mammograms. You cannot use insurance unless you're self-paid, so we'll be able to. But that includes radiologist's. So, you know, we do see during this month. And we offer those at our screenings, which we have in December this year and in rain as well. So we normally during the month of October for our screenings, see about 500. Probably we wouldn't see if we didn't offer this trial.
Think it's talked about a little bit each year, I mean one out of every eight months, 12%, that's pretty high.
Well, as Kayla mentioned, there are several cancers that we do see a lot of here in our particular area and the later stages of it, which is more difficult to treat. And then come back for me and breast, lung and colon, we talk.
Just by quick numbers, it looks like 20% of the people that get diagnosed every year die from it.
That's true, Teresa, that a lot of that goes along with later stage diagnosis, whether it's no screening due to cause or awareness or. Or long periods.
Right. So if you catch it early enough, it seems like it's not bad. I mean.
It's definitely need a lot more time to learn if it was called in an early stage.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Does WBU out here do gene testing? Is that part of the? Your public effort to get people that have those genes tested? My mother has.
So if some of the people you talk to your primary care provider there is that now, in the last couple of months, you've started a partnership. A Morgan Council of this actually. And a counselor that's on, that would go into your primary care. Yes.
Again, one of the benefits of the WBU Medicine. We have a full complement of hematologists, oncologists, in fact, one of them specializes in breast cancer. So we have a very, a very good treatment center and screening.
All right. I obtain a motion for the proclamation.
I make a motion to adopt the proclamation for West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day and Breast Cancer Awareness Month for October 2020.
Again, motion been made. Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Screening in this county, yes, we do. Yes.
All right. Well, thank you for all your hard work and dedication.
Good to see you all.
Did what? Yeah, we have an interview. Yeah.
Oh, we brought you some dancing and music to please the additional guests.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is an interview with Boarding Commissioner Bankersy Karen Burkhardt, candidate for the Farmland Protection Board. Good morning Karen. Tell us a little bit about yourself that we may not know and why you want to serve on the farmland protection, although your Rita had said it's a lot. Sounds like you've been a farm girl for quite a while.
I grew up on a orchard in Ohio and I attended graduate from the house that opposed a degree in biology, which is fruit science. I worked for Nouse Foods in this Muslim. In Pennsylvania for two years. And worked out of the anywhere plant store closed. I was in banking for eight years. Berkeley County Schools in the federal programs doing vegetarian work and purchasing. Been a member of the West Virginia State Horticulture Society, which is the fruit growers. We have a farm. We have sheep cows, horses, goats, dogs.
All the farms.
And I dare you to walk up to the fence with a dog.
Is that right?
So we, my husband and I, in addition, he also worked at Nouse Foods. In addition to working, we have always farmed part-time. We used to have orchards. We part of the farmland protection. So we worked, actually worked a lot of this. Feel very strongly about protecting our areas, so some of our areas.
Karen, you and Mark have always kept it very, very nice place. I can say that.
That sounds like it.
And I've been back out with my sister who's been friends with Karen and Karen, Mary and Susan for a long, long time since grade school. It's always been a nice place.
Inside and out. It's a beautiful house as well.
All right. Mr. Barnhart, you have any questions for Karen?
You sound very well suited for the farmland protection. Anything that you think the farmland protection could do? After that.
I don't know. I mean, Mark does a really great job. I think, I think there's a lot of awareness. Always you can spread more awareness. That's something I think, you know, it's to agriculture that, you know, to talk about other people. Consider that as an impression. I don't know. It's really, and helping other people, I guess sometimes the board members help as people are applying also and after going through that process. Which can be very difficult for them to understand. And it changes all the time also, even probably what we did is a little bit different. We actually were going to do, there's also federal money, federal program, and we almost signed up for that, but there was just a lot of people using it. So, a lot of things are there.
With the whole farm?
Ms. Mark?
I want to thank you for being, first of all, part of the farmland family because as I said, we have over 6,000 acres, which is phenomenal for this area. And I thank you for applying, you know, this, it's so important in a growth area to have this kind of program going. And you were talking about the difficulties. Every time, like you said, Mark gets down one project and figures this is the way it's to be done, and then they change the rules on him. And it is costly because some of the farmland protection money, it all comes from transfer fees, has to be spent for redoing either a survey or redoing some type of application or redoing some type of something they want. And it's interesting. I think that you'll add another avenue because having a science in agriculture, you might thought, you might think of something that the rest of us hasn't. Which because, yes, Robert Portina's term is up. So I really want to thank you for that and looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Karen?
Thanks for coming in and, you know, obviously with all that you do, farm and, and your job and all that, you know, volunteering is, is another, you know, another step in commitment to community and obviously you are committed to community. So thanks for, thanks for coming in and, and offering to, offering to serve on one of the county boards. I'd like to know your thought on, there's a question that's came up many times talking with parks and recs about farmland being preserved and not being able to be used for parks and recs because it's, it's not under their, under their guidelines, I guess. How do you feel about that? You think, you think that could or, or shouldn't be and, and if not, why?
You mean protecting it versus letting the parks and recs?
Yeah, I mean, protecting it from being developed, obviously, but if.
For quality of life.
Right, right. If quality of life purposes and, and one of the reasons I'm saying is because you're right close to obviously a park out there.
Yes. They want to buy the land between us and the park.
Right. But, but, yeah, but, but how do you feel about that? I mean, does, 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 does putting farmland, putting land in farmland protection and letting the parks and recs actually use it for, for quality of life, does that still serve the purpose in your mind of the preservation or do you think it should stay the way it is?
Well, I guess, you know, you have to define the use that, you know, that strictly is going to stay farmland. I mean, I think that's a great use and it could give access to more people to farming. That so many people aren't, it's just, you know, when you grow up and they eat just, you just know stuff, you know, people think goats are sheep and, you know, they die, but I love your sheep. I, but thinking of Porthouse Farm in particular, you know, as long as you have farming that you didn't put in parking lots and just a lot of, or making it super commercial such as, I mean, ours is a great operation. It's wonderful because again, that gives people an opportunity to see farming and an aspect of it that they would never, ever see otherwise, you know, to come out and pick out those, get cherries and strawberries and.
And a hands-on.
Yeah. I think there would have to be stipulations that, you know, you're not building buildings and adding more parking and just, you know, because then that kind of, and I know you have to have access. But plus, just knowing what the programs are now, it would probably have to be a whole other segment either. Except they're so restricted what you can do. Well, actually, like we could have a, I guess we could have added businesses for people in that and still, but you fall under the other certain restrictions. So as long as it is a.
And I can see that happening. I can see the, the parks and recs actually having a place for community gardening and those type of things to, to take place where you still have some type of agricultural use on it, but, but under the parks and recs, yeah.
Mr. Dullier, the one issue is it comes up and it's every five years, it's before the legislature in Washington DC under the House of Representatives and the Senate. And they're the ones that maintain all of those regulations that really am straighten us.
Well, and, and I totally understand that, but those regulations get changed and, or stay the way they are because of the people that are in those groups. And so if those people are lobbying to change, then there's pressure on them to change. So that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm asking is because, you know, it's what is the future of farmland protection, you know?
I guess another thought is honestly, I'd rather see farmland protection in part of the parks and recs than being 500.
Right. And, and exactly, yeah.
Yeah, they kind of go hand in hand a little bit. Mr. Waker?
I think Karen, I had you on a meeting, Karen, and then here, I'm not saying, but like six, eight years ago through Rotary. And we volunteered on a lot of the same boards and stuff for the same committees. But yeah, I think she'd be an excellent person to go for a farmland presentation. Think a lot of knowledge.
Yeah, I think Karen, I don't have many, any questions to ask you. I think, I think you do, according to your resume, come in with a lot of knowledge. And again, I think your farm is one of the nicest looking farms, I've seen. Very, very well taken care of. So to me, that's a lot of pride and joy. And plus all the other boards and stuff that you said on in the past and. Looks like you would be a good person to appoint to that, to that board. So thank you for taking the time and dedication to come in and continue to serve your community and that. Next, we open the floor to items for the public. Hello Paula.
Good morning. I am here to make some introduction to our new cell communicators as well as our new director. Starting with the new telecommunicators who started on the 16th, October 16th. Is Chastity Robles.
Chastie.
Lisa Hawkins.
Lisa.
Take one days.
How y'all doing? So it's good to have you onboard.
Heard you right into the fire.
No pun intended, was it?
So you've been here for 14 days, it sounds like. Like us in Florida, I guess. Yeah, yeah. It's actually a great career. There's a lot of job security there, that's for sure. Yeah, so, and it seems like, you know, we're always wanting to improve our staff and, and keep it growing and, and it is very challenging work. Appreciate y'all being here. Paula, your dedication to keep a staff, all the training that you do year after year. Y'all have any questions for us or statements? Y'all have any questions for us or statements? You can ask us any question. We'll, we'll confirm or deny anything on Facebook.
We'll give you a ear and invite you back. We won't do it on a public comment, may have been on an executive session.
They have, they've actually already been through the 40-hour basic telecommunicators course. They've completed that, but they also have thoroughly, thoroughly been made aware of with the roles, responsibilities of a, an emergency telecommunicator is within our company. They've committed to it. They've said that they'll follow through and I said, okay, now we'll remind you, we'll remind you of this. So they have already started mapping. We're already on our second map. And they're starting to feel the pressure a little bit, even with just that short timeframe. But again, as long as they stick to it, the classroom is easy and then they'll move it to the center. Probably I'd say about, at least the end of November.
Was that right? Good.
They'll be probably in a very clear classroom, anyone who sits eight weeks. Sometimes eight weeks depending, but because I have three of them, it may be sooner because I'm able to do it a lot quicker.
Because usually there's six or eight, right?
Yes, yes.
Now we're going back into another recruitment?
Not sure yet.
We are.
We are. Yes, because even, but these three were still short.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I think we, we need to go into another recruitment, hopefully find some, some nice people as you have here today. And, and somebody that seems like they're going to be dedicated to the job and actually their families as well. But we want to try to stay up on top of everything and try to get fully, fully staffed. And sometimes we talk around here about being overstaffed a little bit. So yeah, nice, be nice for y'all. Who's the, who's the new one on, on your right?
The new one to my right is our new director, Jennifer Swisher from Washington County. I've had the privilege of speaking to her several, several different times this week. And it's been a pleasure. So I will let her have the podium for.
Jennifer, you've been here for I think four days now.
It is. I, I have to thank you. Each, each of you. I'm excited for, I think it's a privilege and it's a challenge at the same time. So I look for these young ladies to work with them for years to come. So that, that is one of my goals is not only to recruit, but to retain them to this day with us. For, for some years. It's been a pleasure to work with Paula. I'm learning a lot, a lot at once. So it's, it's a great beginning. As you all know, I retire on Friday, I start here Monday. So it's, I'm not taking a break. I'm getting the floor running.
Everybody says it's a challenge working for us.
I think any job is a challenge.
It's a.
It's, it's been a great, really a great beginning. Everyone has been really nice, very warm, particularly good ones. So I'm, my plan is, you know, I'm going to meet with each of these guys to know them a little bit better. So, but it's one of the worst things I've ever did, but definitely with the telecommunications, it's very, I, I was.
So I think we have, what, five? They can see you after, then do three new ones? Is that right? Four, five? Maybe six?
I'd say about that.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. And, well, good. Hopefully we'll get those positions filled one way, one way or the other. You know, maybe, maybe some people, they want to come back. I think we've had that discussion before. So it's always good if there's, there's some mutual ground there, we can, we can work on all that and get, get staff back up. Okay. Jennifer, good, good to have you. Paula, it's always good to see you, young ladies. It's good to have you on board. Look forward to a long-lasting relationship.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I would, I would like to thank all of you because what, what you, what you ladies do is a vital service to all of our emergency responders as well as, as well as a life-saving service to them and all the citizens here in Berkeley County. So thank you very much for what you do.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you for accepting the challenge.
Thank you very much.
Hey, anybody else from, I am from the public. All right. If not, Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President, I'm leaving recess.
We are recess, we'll take the photo.